Good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you guys for coming out. Today's uh January twenty second, uh it's roughly. Five oh nine, um and thank you guys for joining us for this joint audit and maintenance and development uh committee meeting. Um, I'm joined by our Chair for Maintenance Development, uh Councillor Brown. Uh, I'm Jose Delgado, uh Chair of the Audit Committee. Uh, we also have in attendance, uh Young No, Director of Internal Audit. Uh, we have uh Chris Signoli on, uh head of DPW. And I know I announced earlier, uh Councillor Walsh. Again, thank you guys for joining us on there. In the room, we have Michelle.
Michelle Hyde.
Michelle Hyde, thank you for joining us, Michelle, as well. Jay Latori, resident, as well as Sue Haley Arce. So, thank you guys for joining us. Uh, so the, the purpose of today's meeting is we, uh Councillor Brown or Chair Brown and I wanted to connect. Uh, after we heard a number of concerns regarding uh the snowstorm uh last week. Or a week and some change ago, and so we wanted to make sure that, you know, we connected and, and, you know. Gave those concerns, one to our DPW Director, uh but also uh me as a new councillor, wanting to understand. The process that we go through, uh so I can better understand and informing our residents um on that process. Um, as well as looking at, you know, what can we do to improve upon that uh going forward in the future? Uh Chair, anything you want to add?
Thank you, uh Councillor. Uh, and this is Chair. Uh, eh, I wanna recognize uh Councillor Maria Perez also is um in attendance. Um, I think a lot of times. What, we gonna, we got a lot of people coming in and moving in a little bit. But I wanna recognize Councillor Maria Perez. Um, just joining, um, and Tim, Tim Allen, Councillor Tim Allen is joining. Um, today's meeting basically, and, and, and Chris, I wanna thank you for being here. Um, you've always been very responsive. We had to kinda like push this back to, 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 to try to. Cater to some of these snowstorms, um. I think today's meeting kinda isn't really to, we, we're, we're trying to figure out. Maybe some more creative ways and how to target. Um, the snow, the snow, and, 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 and I know my thing when I know with you, cause I know, you know, you guys. Been putting things together, and that's why when um Chair Delgado, he, you know, he's speaking. As far as like the count in and all the numbers thing, it's being, uh, it's a hard time, I know, with the city of getting. Actual clients, people to actually take on these contracts. So, I keep telling people that. You know, we, we got the system in place, we got everything in place, everything is great. But we can't find people, you, we can't force people to actually take these contracts on, you know, so. You know, I, 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 I try to tell people that i- i- it's kind of a, um. It's, it's, it's kind of still something, we kinda are still putting together. I know we did something with the uh tracking. And now it's actually the, 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 the contracts, and I believe the bill. As far as being able to get some of these people to take on these contracts. So, I'm glad that Chair Delgado. It, uh, you know, really, he, he's kinda spearheading this one to try to figure out. How we might be able to like target it and, and, and figure out what can we do to kinda get? Um, I, I don't know, like, I mean, it, I, it, and that, and I'll give it to, I, I, I'll give it, I don't wanna speak for uh. The Chairman, but that's kinda like where we're at. We're not going to kinda like. We're kinda, kinda wanna be very productive in how we address this. I know kinda what the issues are. I know. Chairman Delgado knows what the issues are, and I, and, and once again, I'm glad that you're here. Um. So, with that, I'm gonna give it back to the Chair and let him speak. I don't wanna speak for.
Oh, well, thank you Chair, uh Chair Brown. Um, honestly, I just wanted to open the floor to, to Chris. I think one of the things for me. Um, as a newer councillor is, you know, I, I don't necessarily understand everything, and so I wanna make sure that I'm educated as much as possible. So that I could, one, can be able to respond to our constituents, uh when they do raise the concerns. But two, I think this is also, you know. It's, it's, it's great to continue to bring stuff up so that we continue to educate folks, right? Um, so I think if, if there's a process. Or there's a lack of, of, of contractors, right? We need to understand that, right? And how do we, as a city, move forward, right? Because. Uh, I get it, you know, I've heard it for many years in terms of, of the plowing situations. Um, and for me, it's like, alright, like, how do we move forward? And how do we continue to get better, right? And, and, and that's where I'm at on it. Um. So, I think I wanna open up the floor to you, Chris, just to kind of, if you can gotta give us kind of a lay of the land. Of what the process is for the city in terms of, you know, plowing our streets. Uh, so that, you know, folks like myself can be better educated, as well as other residents who may not know the process.
Sure, just to uh go back to the beginning, every year right around Labor Day, we put out an advertisement for. Contractors, snow, snow plowing contractors. Uh, the past couple of years, we've probably raised the rates twenty plus percent. We have also added a, an incentive payment. Last year, it was five hundred, this year is seven hundred and fifty dollars. So if you show up to the storms, all the storms, you get an extra seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, when I took over the Department of. Uh, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, we had over a hundred and fifty plows, and since that date. We are down now to a hundred. Uh, for the storm that we had a week and a half ago. Uh, and last week, we have about eighty-eight that show up. So we're roughly about uh. Uh, fifty-five, sixty percent of what we need. Number two, inside of the DPW, I'm short ten drivers. That's a third of my staff drivers. I cannot hire people. People do not apply. The ones who do. Do not wanna deal with residency in the city of Springfield. We have to hire off of civil service lists. I, uh, when I have people from outside the city who want the job, I cannot bypass them. And if I bypass them, it's illegal, so we end up sitting short. Because nobody wants to live in the city, and lastly, um, over the last year and a half, two years. Um, pay with the city of Springfield is probably sixty percent. Of what employees are getting outside the city right now. I've lost eight employees in the last six months, simply for pay. Um, so putting all that together, I don't have enough of my own drivers during storms. Uh, pre-treatment and after the storm, and then during the storm itself, I'm at, you know, a little more than half of what I used to. What that really results in is about, um, really just taking longer. Uh, the storm two weeks ago, because of the type of storm we had, uh, we had about five inches of snow that was heavy wet snow. Uh, then we had about an hour and a half, two-hour break, then we had six inches of very light fluffy snow. We did the city twice. Um, because of the amount of snow we had and the amount of time. Uh, plow drivers for us worked twenty-four hours plus. Um, we came in, I believe it was one, midnight or one o'clock in the morning. Uh, so we worked uh around the clock with, uh, with our guys on that. So, you know, that's kind of where we are. The past couple of years, we have. Uh, lost a number of, of plow companies, bigger plow companies. Primarily because they're construction companies, and if they bring people back in during layoff periods. Uh, it screws up their unemployment. Uh, so they can't come, they can't come back in, get put on a payroll for a day. Uh, then they lose uh a full week's worth of unemployment, then they have to reapply again. So that's the common complaint that we get from contractors. Um, we, every, I'm gonna say this year. Every person who submitted an application for plowing was accepted. Last year, I would say two weren't, and simply because of condition of vehicles. Um, and so we've been, you know, if we're dealing, you know, with the storm that we had last week. Uh, you know, you're talking two, three, four inches of snow, you know, that takes us nine, ten hours to do the whole city. Uh, where you're dealing with the, the one that we had before, you know, it took us twenty-four to twenty-eight hours, depending upon where you are in the city. To do the entire city twice. Uh, so we are looking at a severe shortage of our own drivers. We're looking at a severe shortage. Of our plow contractors. Um, and I think what that's, that's uh coming to being is, is just things are taking longer. Especially during snowstorms. Uh, for those of you who aren't aware, the city is divided into fifteen sections in the city. Uh, each one of the sections has an inspector, uh, and we split the contractors up based upon those sections. Uh, in the city, we have fifty-one subsections. So basically, we're dealing with two. Vehicles in each subsection of the city, uh, that is anywhere between twenty-eight and thirty-five streets. Depending upon where you are in the city. So, um, that's really, that's, you know, kind of a nutshell of what we've been, what we're dealing with. We've been dealing with it for the last three, four years. Uh, the past couple of years, the storms that we've had have been very simple. To the point where when we finish the storm, instead of going into, you know, the teens, we've gone into the thirties, forties, in some cases, the fifties. So stuff melts uh very, very, very quickly. All of the storms, uh, you know, I've listened to, people call me, I've listened to social media. The city of Springfield pre-trades. Uh, we pre-treat, we pre-treat. I don't know how many times I can say that, but we pre-treat. We get complaints from residents that they're following our trucks, and they're getting hit by salt. So if we don't pre-treat, how do you get hit by salt? Um, when uh we pre-treat. As much as we can prior to the storms, uh, we do not pre-treat residential streets. We don't have the manpower, never have, the city's never done it, never will. There are probably about fifteen, twenty. Plus residential streets that we do pre-treat, simply because of grade, location, cut through. Um, you know, steepness of the grade and, and, and a few others that we deal with. Uh, but all of our roads get pre-treated. Uh, received a complaint today. Why are our streets white? That's because of salt. Uh, well, they wanted to know if we were going to be hosing off the streets because it's gonna contaminate the groundwater. That's the sort of, you know, questions that we're getting as well. Uh, but, you know, that's kind of a general overview. Of where we are with our snowplow program, the number of contractors, uh, individual employees. And right now, I only have two employees who are licensed to drive a loader. So. Uh, when we're trying to load trucks, I only have two employees, uh, who can do that work. So, um, we are severely short of staff, cannot hire people, people don't apply. We work off of civil service lists, and uh we're having to deal with low pay and. Residency, I've made speeches the last couple of years that residency would severely hind my department. It is now, and it has this year. Uh, and it will get worse this year, and it will get worse the year after, uh, simply because of. Number one, low unemployment right now, so there's not as many people looking for jobs. Uh, but the idea of trying to hire certain people. Uh, through our civil service program, uh, our hands become very, very tied at this point. So I don't know if there's any specific question you want me to elaborate on more, uh, or some additional information. I'm happy to give that.
If, 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 if I may.
Excuse me.
Um, what, what I, what I'd like to do is, um. Since we got you here, Chris, I mean, you always do a fantastic job. I love the way you are very responsive in my area. Um, I'm gonna let the councillors maybe uh have some questions uh first. For you, and then maybe uh some of the people here who might have some questions, um.
There's, there's only, I'm, I'm sorry, councillor, there was one thing I could add before you do that, if it's okay. Um, another common complaint that I see is about pay. Uh, we pay contractors within a week. Uh, nobody, the only people who are waiting at this point are people who don't have a contract. And everything with them is because we don't have a contract, because we're waiting something for them, whether it's a tax certificate or whatever. We process the payment, contractors do not invoice us, we process the payment. And if we do it on a Monday, they may have a check deposited by Friday, but at a minimum, it's ten days, uh. When I say a minimum, maximum, excuse me, is probably ten days for payment. The storm that we did last week, we processed on Wednesday. People will probably have those checks this Friday.
Thank you, Chris. Um, and, and what I'm gonna do as far as uh so focus would understand, we're gonna, I'm gonna let uh Councillor Dabla. Um, is here, and then we'll go with Councillor Walsh, and then I see her hand up, and then Councillor Perez. Um, Councillor.
Uh, good, give us a turn, uh, good, uh, Councillor, Chair Delgado. Uh, Chris, uh, good evening, sir, thank you for being here. You have always.
You're welcome.
Uh, done, uh, uh, eh, the best to people, city, uh, in best shape, and I've always said that. You know how it is, your my friend. But without being said, let me ask you some questions, and just for clarity purposes, uh, uh, Chris. You, I believe you say that the sixty-six percent less pay. For, is that for the plowers, as opposed to the private sector?
No, I'm talking, I'm, I'm talking about our staff versus the public, versus of. The private sector and/or some other public sectors out there. So we've, we've been losing employees. Uh, like I said, probably six or eight of them in the last, uh, uh, six to ten months to either other. Departments, most notably Springfield Water and Sewer, and/or contractors.
So, so I'm clear, the people are clear, that watching at home are clear. So you're saying that, uh, your staff in DPW makes sixty-six percent. Uh, well, they make about sixty-six percent of what they will make in the private sector.
Yeah, cause our, our guys, our guys who are, uh, leave, you know, who are working at, say, you know, I'm gonna say in the mid twenty dollar an hour. Are leaving for thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-eight dollars an hour, uh, with a private contractor.
Right, so it's all thirty-four percent less that they make for, for this. So let me ask you the, uh, the obvious questions. Are we gonna reflect that on the budget this year to bring it to par? Uh, is it a union issue? It's, what's the issue that they are not up to par?
It, it's, it's a union issue because pay's set in the contract. Uh, the only thing that I can say is that this year. Uh, in June, contracts expire. Uh, we have contracts with UFCW, Ask Me, uh, Engineers, UPSY. Uh, those contracts are set for renegotiation for this year. Uh, and I know one of the things that I need to do is. Uh, number one, discussed with, uh, with finance, and obviously with the mayor, that I've already spoken with him about, is. Pay scales the way that, uh, we're gonna be doing in a negotiation.
Okay, so Chris, so that I'm clear, so the people that drive the, the, uh, the salt trucks and the actual plow truck, plow trucks. That's a whole different union altogether, or do they belong?
No, tho- those guys, those guys are, ninety-nine percent of them are in the UFCW union. However, those guys who drive those trucks must have a CDL license. CDL licenses right now, uh, and I'm not just saying for the city of Springfield or for any other municipality, but private. You cannot find people with CDL licenses, and one of the primary reasons is marijuana. Um, marijuana right now, ever since marijuana was legalized, um, uh. People just don't wanna be involved with having a CDL license, uh, in the state of Massachusetts, because. Uh, you get randomly tested, and I always say to people, if, uh, you know, I kinda say it somewhat jokingly. You can go out on a Friday night and drink to your heart's content, and you're probably gonna pass an alcohol test on Monday morning. But if you, uh, you know, have a little bit of marijuana, it's gonna be in your system for thirty-plus days. So, uh, we've had to terminate a number of employees because of it, and, um, it's a. Awful thing throughout the entire industry, not just municipalities, but private side as well. Which is one of the reasons on the private side that you're seeing some of these, I say a little crazy as far as some of the pay that some of these employees are being. Um, um, given, but, you know, it's become supply and demand at that point.
Right, so Chris, my last question, so that my other colleagues can jump in. Uh, so. You're saying, I believe last time we spoke out that, about this last year, I believe you mentioned that we only have three big trucks for the main hour, is that correct?
No, I have, uh, twenty trucks, twenty of our trucks. And when we are doing pre-treating, those are all our guys, depending upon how many are available. Based on a particular shift, a particular time. Uh, and during a actual event. We usually have anywhere between sixteen and twenty of our own trucks out there, the bigger, the bigger dumps. Uh, depending upon driver availability, uh, and, um, uh. Vehicle availability, cause sometimes a vehicle may be down, but in most cases, we're between fifteen and eighteen of our own big trucks. Out there. We only have twenty. Um, so that's, that's all that we have in the city for big trucks.
So we, any given a, a snowstorm, we can have fifteen trucks, or the big ones.
Yeah. Yeah.
Very well. Uh, I have one more question, but I would, uh, uh, with the chairs, uh, let the other colleagues, uh, jump in. Uh, thank you, Chris, I will be following up with more questions.
Thank you.
And I see, uh, Councillor Walsh.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Councillor Brown, and, and Chairs Brown and Delgado for having this meeting. You know, I think it's fair to say that there certainly are many concerns and complaints about the way the city has handled the. The plowing, and Chris, I have to say, I think it's very discouraging. That people don't wanna live in the city. That cow, that comment really bothers me. But the temporary drivers, they don't have to be city residents, right?
No, they don't. The contractors do not have to be city residents.
Okay, so your problem is attracting. Uh, drivers that don't live in the city.
Both. It's, it's our drivers, uh, because as I mentioned before, and as Councillor Davila asked about drivers. If I only have twenty or so drivers that I can put out pre, during, and post the storm. I then have to figure out maximum hours, how much needs to be treat, treat, excuse me, pre-treated. What we're gonna do afterwards, and what the temperatures are, and be able to parse those employees out based upon the number of guys who can drive. And so it's becoming, it's becoming a problem with us, and it's becoming a problem, obviously, with the contractors.
You know, I think we're at a point in time where this is an issue that has to be solved. I mean, I thought the roads are extremely dangerous, and I think we're. We're putting people in a very unsafe position without, without having the streets cleared, particularly the side streets. So that, I think it's worth it to see if there's some way we can raise the pay for the drivers. I would support something like that. You know, I have, I never remember the mayor having to apologize for a storm. So I think this is really an issue that has to be solved. And Chris, there was such a dramatic difference between Springfield and East Long Metal.
Thank Councillor Walsh, are you, are you, are you finished with your remark?
I'll be happy to know I'm finished.
Uh, Councillor Perez.
Yeah, yes, my only question in hearing what I'm hearing from everyone, how could we develop a plan? And I know, uh, pay is an issue. But this is an existing issue that's gonna happen, and maybe we're not gonna get the storm that we got, those two storms, but it could get worse. So I think we have to plan ahead and just hurt a committee in place. I mean, this is a very high-risk factor for everyone. Um, I have in my, I mean, my war streets that have not been clean, never mind. Um, and, and I pray that it's gonna rain, so nature could take place instead. But we have to, we have to put a plan together, and I think, um. I'm recommending to the President of the Council how we're gonna work with Chris and see, it's not only the increase. I think what I hear is the plan of attracting people, plus what's going on, is two, two, um, issues that are here right now. And how to keep the employees that are, are working right now, and the ones, and how to attract new employees. So I think that's the agenda right now. We're not gonna resolve it tonight, but this is very, uh, critical when it comes to the city. Um, that's only my comment up to this point. And I will aware everyone that we need to take a, um, um, a higher awareness of what's going on. And I have not mentioned the elders that I have received call from right now, from my constituents, in terms of walking and falling down. So I think, um, I don't know how we're gonna address this, but it should be a top priority for, for us. As city council members, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councillor Perez. Uh, Councillor Allen, I see that you're on. Councillor Allen, do you have any?
Yeah, yeah, great. Um, I just unmuted myself, so yeah. Uh, thanks, Councillor Brown and Councillor.
You're getting me dizzy walking around, Tim. You get me dizzy when you walk around.
Alright, I'll, I'll stand still for a second.
Well, I get dizzy listening to you anyway, so.
You make me dizzy. Uh, anyway, um, I have one simple question, and that is, um. Is there any chance of using water and sewer, uh, and subcontracting to them? I know there's. You know, a lot of your, you said a lot of your employees go to Water and Sewer, they've been privatized or whatever they've been for, you know. Fifteen years or something. Uh, I had heard that in the past, I don't know how far in the past that we had done that. And it just seems, um, like something to look into, um, because they have, you know. Trucks upon trucks, it seems like, it seems like they have more trucks than we do. I, I don't really know, but, uh, is that, how, how possible is that?
Right, they, they have no plow trucks. They don't, they don't plow. And I'm probably gonna guarantee that most of their, uh, equipment isn't even set up for a plow. For it, and in the fourteen years that I've been with the city, fifteen winters. Water and Sewer has never, never been involved with us on anything. We work with them on roadway and construction stuff, standard stuff that, you know, the both of us can do. In trying to get stuff complete, but it's always on a, you know, whether it's a water main break or something like that. Uh, they are not employees, um, even though they're, they're under the same retirement system, they're not employees of the city. Um, so they're not covered, uh, on that, and, and if I went outside. Uh, I'm sure I'd get a union grievance in a second.
Uh, well, what is the difference between going outside to Water and Sewer, to going outside to private?
Cause I would be pay, I would be paying them as an employee. I would have to pay them employee rate.
Good, oh, w- well, I, you understand that stuff better than me, but.
Yeah.
My idea was, would be to, to hire them on an outside contract or something, so they. Um, we just had an agreement between the two organizations, and they did that, so that the fact that they're de facto employee of. Springfield, or whatever we wanna call them, uh, we wouldn't use that, we would just hire them for the services like you do the private truck drivers. Um, I'm, you know, I don't know that much about that stuff, but it just seems like we're trying so hard to get. Cloud, you know, people to supplement our own staff, our own staff is understaffed, et cetera, all the things you just laid out. Um, maybe there's some possibility there.
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna go back, I don't know, four, five, six years in talking with Water and Sewer about stuff. You know, the other thing, they have a job with Water and Sewer. Uh, you know, so they would have to be, you know, not doing their job while they're doing with us. And again, I would have to pay them their rate, and every contractor that we hired has to have a plow. We cannot allow out of city, in its, in our rules and regulations, non-employees cannot drive city trucks.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm sure there's logistical things like that, that I, I'm not aware of. But I just see this force of trucks sitting there, um, or maybe something could be worked out, and, and I don't. You know, you hire them for half a million dollars or something to supplement, as our, our budget is usually one point six million. On this thing, I don't, you know, you can never predict how much we're gonna use out of that, and we just build a contract with them, and then they figure it out. If they're interested. They certainly are not bashful about, uh, raising water rates. They basically have said they're gonna raise them. Six percent or some odd for the next ten years. That's another whole issue, but, um. Maybe they could help us out a little more. They have like two hundred and fifty employees, don't they?
Oh, they probably have more than that.
And what, and what do you have?
Uh, I, I'm supposed to have a hundred and thirty, and I'm probably at about a hundred and thirteen, fourteen right now.
You're fifteen understaffed, and.
Yeah.
Even if you're a full staff, you're half of what they have. It just seems like something worth looking into.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, I had heard that we did that in the, this, in the past, I don't know how far back. Uh, that would be one of my ideas. I don't know if this comment makes, makes any sense, but, you know, all the people that set up Bright Nights are. Park Department employees, I think, who are hired, I'm not even sure how it works, if they're, if they. Are hired separately by Judy Matt or whatever, or if they're still in their park department, pay. pay mode, um, and it's just considered overtime on their regular pay. I'm not sure how that works, but you know, that's a scenario where we're getting employment, labor, support for a city initiative, um, which um somehow supplements people's pay. So I, you know, I would just ask, you know, we can talk about it offline. We can talk about it in a finance committee or something, but I just wanted to put that idea on the table.
Yeah, mo, and most of those employees, because we've been through this, we actually went through this a number of years ago when the uh uh, school department facilities lost their plowing contractor. Um, most of those employees uh, over in parks and facilities, very few of them have, have a CDL license. They're, they're mostly driving around pickup trucks. And they're doing schools, they're doing, you know, the bus, the city facilities, et cetera. Um, you know, so they're working on their side, getting all the city facilities, especially schools, getting all that done while we're doing the roadway side.
Yeah. Yeah, um. But I would bet a lot of those water and sewer trucks, yeah, I know they don't have plows and this and, and other stuff like that, but are sitting dormant while we're scurrying around trying to plow the streets. Um, so anyway, I just leave that idea on the table and ask you to consider it if there's any possibilities.
I can examine it.
I'm sorry.
So I said, I can, I can examine that.
That'd be great. I'd be happy to work with you on it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Um, now I, I wanna be able to uh turn it over to uh Chair Delgado for any uh thing he might wanna ask. And then uh he'll run the next portion as far as um, maybe some of, we have three people here uh who quickly who might wanna have addressed a little bit, that might have certain things that they, because we ask certain uh constituents if they might have certain things that they might wanna help the body, just to, uh, you know, regular people just like us. So we have three people. Um, they'll be very quick, but I'll turn it over to Chair Delgado, you know, he'll usher in that portion. But I know he might have some uh questions and things he might have for you, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Brown. Uh, Chris, thank you for, for giving us kind of that high-level kind of
Thank you.
overview. Um, and again, appreciate you being here. Uh, I guess I have some more concerns um or questions and comments regarding the contract portion. And I'm wondering, you know, do we have a process to assess what we're able to do as a city in comparison to similar-sized cities? Uh, because I'm curious to know, like, what is the city of Whistler doing? What is Hartford doing? Are they dealing with the same challenges that we're, that we're dealing with? Do you have any knowledge of that?
Absolutely. Every town, uh, I'm gonna say with the exception of probably Long Meadow and East Long Meadow, Long Meadow and East Long Meadow have all of their own employees do the city. Every other community around here requires contractors. And we are all fighting for the same contractors. I deal with Chickaby, uh, Agwam, Wilbraham. All of these communities are having an extreme difficulty getting uh, getting drivers um, and contractors to come in and do the work. Uh, I got called this year by a handful of contractors who were asking me about our rates versus the other communities. Ludlow, as an example, uh, has been looking for contractors. They got a ton of contractors in town. Um, so uh, they have a few more that are there, but their rates are probably twenty-five percent less than what we're paying. And they can't find it. So my conversations have been all over the board with all of the other communities around here, Mast dot included. Mast dot cannot find uh, drivers. They're looking for, for the bigger truck CDLs. Uh, and if, you know, all, all fall, all you saw were advertisements all over the, the uh, the highways for mass DOT drivers. And uh, I, I hate to say unfortunately, we're all in the same boat uh at this point, trying to uh, get people to, to do the work. And, you know, over the last two, three, four years, we haven't had a lot of um big snow events or a lot of snow events. So contractors that are working for us now, you know, they're making two, three thousand dollars that, you know, may not even cover damaged equipment and/or insurance. So, you know, uh, with the lack of snow that we've had over, you know, in general terms, I'm not talking about uh, you know, the, we, we really have it over the last couple, three years, because three years ago, we had three storms. Last year, we had three years ago, we had four. Last year, we had three. Um, so, you know, a lot of the contractors just look at it at this point and say it's not worth it. Um, and, but every community that I've been dealing with is, everybody's in the exact same boat.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, I guess one thing I, I'm thinking, I'm thinking out loud is obviously, there's a need for people. We can't find people. Um, and I know that my fellow counselors, you know, obviously, this is a concern to us and, and the residents. Are there other ways that we could be working together to, to assist you in terms of getting that word out? Um, I mean, even as far as like having some type of session where, you know, we teach folks what are the requirements to be a contractor with the city? Um, right? Because I don't know what that's, you know, what those requirements are, you know. So are there educational things that we could be doing, meetings that we can try to set that up in advance and trying to recruit folks locally? Um, and then my other concern was I'm sure that, you know, the parking ban itself, I know it's confusing for me trying to remember what side of the road is what time. I've noticed other communities that when they do the parking ban, they either ban it outright in terms of uh parking on the street, or they simply ban it on the odd side, right? And so I guess how much does the parking ban in terms of people being parked where they're not supposed to be affect you, aside from the challenges you're having from a workforce perspective?
Well, the, the parking ban, um, I would love it that there was no on-street parking. City of Hartford during the snowstorm has no on-street parking, zero. And it is a big issue uh that allows them to do things, I'm gonna say, do the road a little bit better. The other issue is about three or four years ago, Counselor uh Williams um, was looking to do some modifications. And one of my recommendations was during snow bans, no on-street parking. And then we were also looking at going exactly to what you were talking about, whether no odd or no even side uh, parking, which is what we discussed, and, and the whole discussion never ended up going any farther after that. Um, on a majority of the residential streets, uh, I'm, I'm gonna say majority, I, I don't mean it to say it that way, on a lot of the residential streets, uh, especially the narrow ones, uh, Old Hill, Upper Hill, uh, certain sections of Forest Park, certain sections of Indian Orchard, certain sections of especially the North End, uh, people are parked on both sides of the street. Uh, we towed, um, I think that first storm, we did six hundred tickets and towed a hundred and eighty vehicles. Um, and I could probably ticket three thousand and tow two thousand if we had uh enough people to be able to do that. Every time that I tow, well, I'm not gonna say I. Police Department does the ticketing, Police Department does the towing, we direct them on where to go and do a follow-up. Every time we tow a vehicle, I get a call from a city counselor wanting to know why we towed somebody's vehicle. Why did you tow, why did you tow my buddy's vehicle? And can you negate it? Every time there's a snowstorm, I get a call from a counselor. I'm not gonna say it's, it's a different one every time, but I get these phone calls. And then I also have plowing into the public way. Uh, so we do, we do a lot of those as well. Excuse me one second.
Well, why, 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 why we, why we're um pausing? I wanna um Counselor Perez, I see. Was it a question you had for Chris?
I'm sorry. Stuff was getting ready to fall off my desk here.
No, I'm sorry. Counselor Perez, did you have a question?
Oh, she got muted.
Well, sorry. What, what we'll do is um, what we'll do, Counselor Perez, is we'll finish up with um Chair.
I'm, I'm back, I'm back, um, um, Counselor Brown, um.
What, what, what we'll do, Counselor Perez, um, we'll let, let, let uh Chair Delgado finish up his questioning, and then we'll come right at you. Um, and then we'll go to the, 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 the other people. So if, if, if there is other counselors, so I, 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 I do apologize to my colleagues. If there is other counselors who want to have follow-up questions before um the public had questions, I, I will entertain that. So Counselor Perez, um, a, after Chair Delgado, is, is, is.
I'm, I'm, I'm good. That was, I just kinda wanted to understand better the contract situation and how are we doing in, in comparison to our, our, you know, sister cities? Um, I, I do think that, you know, I'd love to see more work being done to understand that and, you know, have something brought to the council at a future time to, to kinda give us a better understanding of what that landscape is so that we can work with you to improve that. But I also think, you know, to the point on the parking ban is just making sure that we're continuing to educate folks on that, because the last thing I wanna do is continue to to tow folks, uh, because that's definitely a challenge financially for a lot of, a lot of folks, right? And so I wanna understand, you know, why are people not parking? Is it because they're just totally disregarding it, or is it because they don't understand, you know, what time that they're supposed to be on, on one part of the street, right? And so I think there, we, we've gotta do it both ways there. Uh, but I know, I, I don't wanna speak anymore, so uh, Counselor Perez, Lord yours.
Yeah, thank you so much. No, the issue is right now that um one of the many calls that I've received, if the, if the, if the street is not being cleaned, and I think this also is a big issue. And then you have a van uh for the hours that you need to, um, and the yacht and even um, those are the calls that I'm receiving because the street is not clean, so they're not able to park in the even side. I mean, uh, we have to take all this combination, and those are the calls that I'm receiving. Um, my car has been towed, but I cannot park on the other side because it has not been cleaned. Um, and I have, I, I have some streets that the people are check following the ordinance, but the way they are parking, because the street is not plowed, is a risk for the drivers that go through that street. So I just wanted to bring uh that awareness in terms that we are saying that we don't have enough plows in the street, but we have this ban without the, um, the streets being cleaned. Um, um, and I, it's not excuses, because I have driven over some street that the people are obeying the ordinance, but it put into driveway, a rest away they are parking because the, the street has not been plowed. So I just wanted to bring that comment forward, because it's a whole combination of everything that is happening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Perez. Um, I'm gonna entertain one more uh, uh, Counselor Davila, but I do wanna give an opportunity to our folks who have been patiently waiting here as well uh to be able to speak. So Counselor Davila.
Oh, thank you, Chairman Delgado, and I, I thank you again for your work. Uh, Chris, I'm gonna try to sort of encapsulate what I've been hearing from you, but let me ask you this loose end kind of like questions to, some clarification. I believe you say that to be a driver in Springfield, uh, you have, or to be a contractor as well, you have to have a CDL license, correct?
No.
So.
You, you have to have a CDL license to drive um certain weight vehicles. As a contractor, if you have those vehicles, you obviously have to have a CDL. But if you're driving a dump truck and/or trash truck for the city of Springfield, you have to have a CDL license.
Okay, now, uh, for the contractors, you also need a insurance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, has that been a problem this year? So I remember last year you were saying that was a problem.
It, it's an issue, uh, for example, uh, for vehicles. The smallest vehicle that we will accept is probably an F two fifty uh, because it has to meet the minimum weight requirement. Uh, an average guy who has a guy or woman who has that truck probably does not have a million dollars in coverage. So if they're gonna do snow plowing, they probably have to get an additional endorsement for that. Most of the contractors who work for us don't have an issue, but the individual people who are signing up, and we got a lot of them, uh, probably do have to pay a little bit of a premium. And that was one of the reasons that we wanted to do the um uh, what I'm calling incentive pay, is that if they show up all the time and they get that extra seven hundred and fifty dollars, that's probably gonna cover them for their insurance.
Right. Now, Chris, uh, I probably don't know, I do have a question, two more questions. I'm gonna ask you one, Chris, so I can give the, the members of the public the opportunity to speak and to ask the questions. Uh, Chris, the contractors themselves. In the, if we think of a matrix, where are we in the pay matrix as compared to the other municipalities?
Oh, we're way higher right now.
Okay, so.
Way higher.
In your opinion, what is, what is the problem that we cannot attract contractors?
The, uh, I, in my opinion, it's simple. They don't wanna do it. Or the contractors uh, probably twenty years ago, they probably brought people in and paid them under the table. That's not happening now. Uh, a contractor, you know, I use um, um, you know, Ludlow Construction as an example. You know, they don't plow in the city, but you know, their complaint to me is, hey, when I lay people off for construction, if I bring them back for one day to do plowing, they lose a week's worth of unemployment, and then they gotta reapply. So, you know, somebody may get a check for fifteen hours of plowing, but they've probably lost uh forty to fifty hours worth of unemployment pay.
And so, Chris, my last question to you is, I hear everything that you say, and there is, it will appear to me, my good sir, there's many layers to this onion. And I think that these layers have been consistently festering for years now, because this is.
I agree, yes.
Just that first time that we had this conversation. Uh, and, and again, Chris, like I told you at beginning, at the beginning, I am fully aware that you are doing your best. However, I just, I'm also aware you don't have a magic wand, that you could just move around. I, I'm sure you wish you did, didn't you? But I guess the question is, Chris, with all the respect, what is the plan? What are we gonna do differently so that does not happen again? So we don't have this conversation again. Because, you know, today, people are looking at us funny, and honestly, it's a safety issue. I, I almost broke my neck this morning. You know, I was slayed on the eyes. And so what are we going to do differently to avoid this mess on the next snowstorm?
Well, it, I'm gonna say it depends. Uh, you know, when is it? What time of the day? What are the conditions before? What are the conditions after? Each one of them dictate how we do uh, and how we approach a storm. Uh, for example, if I know it's gonna be forty-five the next day, not that I don't have to do pretreating, I don't have to do as much of it. If it's gonna be fifteen the next day, I gotta do a lot more pretreating to be able to do it. And so each storm, you know, everybody kinda thinks that a storm is a storm and you plow it. Uh, what type of snow is it gonna be? Is it gonna be wet, heavy snow? It dictates, do we get out there earlier? Is it light, fluffier snow that we can wait a little bit? How long is the snow? So it really is every, every event has to have an analysis with it of, of how we're going to attack it with the number of employees, what we're gonna do first, you know, is it a weekend? You know, do we have a, a, all of our uh uh, solid waste drivers available, uh, that sort of thing, uh, to be able to do it. So the, the, the timing type and duration of the storm dictates how we do everything.
Timing, time, and duration. Uh, Chris, I'm sorry, what was the, the cost of this last snowstorm for the city?
Um, I think it was two hundred and thirty thousand.
Uh, what's the average cost of every?
And that, the, the one, two weeks ago, that, I'm talking about this was last Tuesday. The one a week and a half ago was about three hundred and ninety thousand. And that includes our overtime costs, our materials, sand and salt, uh, our drivers and contractors. Uh, so I, I, I'm gonna say an average storm now is probably about two hundred, I'm gonna say two twenty-five to two forty is probably an average. Um, and, you know, uh, for example, this past storm, we did a lot of pretreating before, we're doing treating after. So we, we bundle all those costs together.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, uh, Chairman Delgado, Chairman Brown, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Uh, I wanna be respectful of everybody's time, so I, I wanna open the floor to uh members of the community here. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I, I had a couple of questions. Um, I am.
Can you, please just state your name and.
Michelle Hyde, um, Counselor, um, Delgado, you already answered, asked a question, and um, Mrs. Signo, we already answered it. Um, Mr. Signoli already answered it. And it was, do you talk to the other cities to see what what they're doing? And first and foremost, Chris, I wanna apologize because when you're not sitting at the table, you don't actually hear what's going on. You know, you got people on social media, man, they're beating you up real bad. So I'm apologizing, you know, um.
I'm used to it at this point.
Yeah, yeah, you know, they even said you haven't come on TV yet, you know? Like, what can he say different? But one thing that's really important, because I do work in the ED at Bay State, is that people are falling. It's Chris out there. I made a phone call this morning because um my niece lives off of Roosevelt and Wayside is a is a hill. So you're gonna slide into Roosevelt Avenue. Me personally, I live on Main. They put up a new stop sign. And when you slide into the stop sign in the middle of the road. You can't stop, so we gotta have something. And I understand, I mean, you don't have enough workers. Um, I understand the bonus that you offered. I tell people, um, the funny part about it is that. Is you've run this commercials, you've been talking about trying to hire these people, but by the same token. People don't have regular TV, cable's too high. We gotta find another way to get the information out to the people. But then at the same time, by the same token, like you just said a few minutes ago. We got so many marijuana places going up. If everybody's smoking, can't nobody get a job. So you know, you're caught between a rock and a hard spot. A catch twenty-two, you're not gonna win. Um. And it, but the the biggest, the biggest thing I've seen in the last, since the last storm is people falling. People getting hurt. And that's not on you, but it is actually hurting. Help i- i- is happening. The other thing is, um, the councilman said about the parking ban, come on y'all, the parking ban, then the parking ban, then the parking ban, says I know. Outside this time, even side this time, that everybody has to work together, even the neighborhood. That, so what? You can't park right here? We gotta get out here and shovel the snow so you can park right here. If not, we gotta park at Big Y or somewhere. Somewhere there's a parking lot. You gotta get off the street, but everybody has to work together. It's not all on Chris. So, you know, I beat you up a little bit too, but I'm on your side now that I'm at the table and I'm hearing what's going on. It is, it's hard, but we all gotta figure out together. But guess what? It's just like Christmas. It's coming, December twenty-fifth. We can't be talking about it while the storm is going on. We gotta figure out way beforehand. What can we do to fix it? No, you can't use my HRV. It it. That's two fifty, shoot, that's a eighty thousand dollar truck or more. I understand, but. I don't know. I know superintendents, but you already said it. Everybody gets together and already have that conversation and. It's like things are broken. I don't know if we can fix it. When when I was little, Chris, did the city do the do the snow? Can we just pull a trash truck off for a day and? And do the snow? Has that ever been an option?
Well, our trash trucks don't plow, uh, but we, from time to time, will will do that, will cancel trash. And we'll have all those drivers. Nine times out of ten, we cancel trash. Excuse me, more so because there's just way too much snow on the street for those vehicles to drive. Uh, those vehicles, even though they look huge, are very, very light. They have to be in order to uh to do what we need them to do. So we will, we will cancel trash from time to time and our real goal, sometimes when we cancel the trash, is to be able to utilize all those drivers with us. And again, that gets into, okay, is it a weekend? Cause the trash isn't working on Monday? Is it a Monday? Can we utilize all those guys? Uh, out there as well. And the two storms that we've had, uh, one was. Saturday, I'm losing track of the days. I think it was Saturday to Sunday, the one last week, Tuesday, we picked up trash during the day. Uh, and got it done quick and then had those drivers come in later. Um, for overnight as well. So, you know, we we have to, you know, tho- those, they're working ten hours. So then if I put them overnight at the eight hours, then they're working ten the next day, so that becomes eighteen. So then I have to make sure that I have enough guys the next night if we have comments and complaints and things that we have to deal with. So it becomes a little bit of a juggling act with the numbers.
Thank you, Chris. I I wanna keep it moving, um, so that other folks who might be here might have any questions.
Um, sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Juan Latorre, one twenty-two Forest Hills Road. Thank you, Chairman Delgado, Chairman Brown. Um, I just have a couple of comments to the chair. I'll be brief. Uh, just wanted to try to bring some ideas to the table. I know that, Mr. Signoli, you mentioned the the bonus payment. Um, one idea I had speaking with some residents, um, is, um, you know, could we, you know, through negotiations. Um, front pay that. So some of my ideas where I know we typically start the the advertising in September. Maybe it needs to be July and August, and maybe an idea, a different idea, or could be a sign-on bonus upfront. As opposed to a a performance bonus at the end. I'm sure there's challenges with that because you don't want people signing up and then skipping town. But uh, just one idea there. Um, the second thing I wanted to just mention, I I know that, Mr. Signoli, you mentioned. I think you said there's there's six products you can buy for pre-treatment, and they're all kinda listed by the state DPW. Um, I heard from a couple residents that uh Chickaby, I think, uses something called Clearlane. Might be a different type of salt and it's just a little bit stickier, it might stick to the ground a little bit. Um, better. I I think it was really important to clarify that, you know, the treatment is only on the main arteries, which honestly. You know, I might not have, not every resident's gonna agree with me, but I think it's reasonable that we're getting on the main roads. You know, I I wish every side street in Springfield could get pre-treated, but that was just an idea. Um, if if we're not using that product, I heard about it. And the last thing, just as an observation to the city is, um. I had also spoke with folks in in parks that are talking about, um, you know, people for tree trimming. And they said one of the biggest challenges is that they similarly need CDL licenses, and it's hard to find them. So it it seems like our city may need to consider finding ways to become really proactive. With opening up training opportunities to for CDLs. Um, because it looks like that might help a lot of different departments, not just DPW with plowing. And I thank you for the chance to speak.
Oh, thank you, Juan.
Just an item, item on that one. If you come to the work for DPW, I'll pay you to get a CDL.
Okay, okay, I like it.
Uh, and the material we use for pre-treatment is, it's a different product than basically what it is. It's a calcium-treated salt. Uh, so that when it hits the road, uh, one of the problems that we have in Springfield, especially on our main arteries. Is is putting the material down and it ends up, it ends up in the gutter. Uh, what what you what you really notice now, as I mentioned before, the roads are all white. You drive around. Us Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, everybody's got white roads, so that if we had a a little snow tomorrow, most of that stuff's on the main roads is is just gonna melt. Uh, but yeah, get the word out to everybody. You come to work for me, I pay for a CDL. I pay for a hoisting license. You need a hoisting license to drive a sweeper, to use a loader. We're paying for all of that stuff now, and that's stuff that we've done over the last five, six, seven years.
And I think that's, you know, part of the thing, Chris, is just continuing to send that message out, to communicate with residents. You know, all the requirements and all the the resources that we do have.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's on all of us as as counselors, as residents, um, to kinda work together and make sure that we're sending that message. Do all the different education uh avenues. So I, and I appreciate your coming on that.
Just for me.
Yes, sir.
Um, Chris, how is the auditing process going? Um, uh, as far as checking, I I've had individuals um from my area said that there wasn't. Now, when it comes to the side streets, they said there were no plows that actually even came down this second storm. And they were stay-at-home people.
Are, one of the things that we do when we do our progress reports, our inspectors report to us. Uh, what has been done. What I also do is that I then check those inspectors against their GPS, to make sure they've driven every one of the roadways. So if they're driving the roadways and they're looking at all of these roads to make sure that they're done. Now, this last storm, especially in residential areas. We may have started a couple of them. I know on my street, it was one of the later ones in the section. There just wasn't a lot of snow on the ground. You know, you're talking about two and a half inches, so when you plow it, you really don't end up plowing a lot. So it doesn't, you know, uh, one of the comments that I had on the previous storm was, hey, you missed my street. And I went out on a couple of them. I'm like, well, what are these big piles on the side of the road? Well, I don't know where they came from. Well, they came from the plows. So, uh, you know, just because the road's not down to pavement doesn't mean we didn't plow it. If there is truly, and and the storm last week is kind of an odd one because it's a little look at. If there is truly a street that is missed, we need to know about it.
No, Chris, what I mean is that. I had numerous reports. Um, and when I drive through these side streets, I can promise you. If there eighty percent of every single side street this last time, no one plowed those streets. I don't care what no one tell me.
Uh, that's, that's a hundred percent wrong, Counselor, a hundred percent wrong.
Well, they might.
Street was plowed.
They might, they might have, but they didn't do it effectively. It wasn't, um, and I, and 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 it's my, and and it's not on. Not, not saying as far as what you, on you, no, no mishaps on you, but. When you look at these side streets, if I go right now and I go and put my camera on. And it's still forty degrees and I go in the morning and I give you pictures of every single side street. It's probably about this much snow on every single side street still. Right now, everybody's slipping and they all in, um. The first snowstorm, I always said it was probably we did it too soon, is what I thought. Um. Uh, because it was a, you know, like, it's never a science. I, cause I seen him out there the first time we hit it. And then like, I I just thought it was too soon. And then two hours, three hours later, I think we should have waited two, three hours later. It was just all back covered again with like foots of snow. I mean, and there's never a science, cause I know we're still hiring people. And they're gonna get out when they get out. Um, but it seemed like it was an issue with the salt. I- i- is there something, like, i- i- is there, I I I know there were individuals who said you can put it down first. Um, i- i- it's kinda like how you pre-treat it. Is there a material that you can put on it? Post, um, post-snow, like, is there something that can melt some of the 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 actual snow that's still on the street?
Well, we do that through, I I mean, for, if you're talking just residential streets, we do those through uh complaint process and also. Excuse me, by our foreman looking at streets after determining whether or not we need to do something. Because those streets have not been pre-treated. And that's, you know, one of the things that you noticed in this last storm is, you know, all the 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 main roads are fine down to black pavement. And then you get on the residential streets and the snow is packed down because it was driven on for, you know, eight to ten hours before we got to. To plowing them. So that's gonna happen a lot. There's a lot of residential streets out there now that are down to pavement in certain areas. Because we've done sanding and salting and or a combination of the both. So if if there's streets out there that people are concerned about, make sure they get in touch with three-one-one and we'll get out there and uh put some sand and or salt down.
Well, and 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 why I say, Chris, I I can just assure you, every single side street needs it. And not, not, not one. Um, is there something we can do as far as budgeting to kinda like, uh. Put that aside to make sure, I I know we have to target it. We do Main Street and then maybe. I know how you do with paving, like, we gotta target certain streets and how we hit it. Um, is there something maybe with the city council and free money we can put aside? I mean, I like to make sure I get you the the money you need, but is there some money we can put aside for maybe some uh extra material? Uh, maybe even some more futuristic material, cause it's salt that we're using, maybe, I don't know, it doesn't. I I maybe if we can maybe go in some more futuristic um approaches, advanced approaches as far as treating this. Like, what what's on there right now? Like, the afterwards, side street, um, I don't know, I know, um, um. Mr. Lator was talking about something that they use with sticky stuff. I have no idea. But there has to be something we can throw down on this salt that's right, I mean, on on this snow that's right, that's around right now that can just melt it up. Um, and still, I know we have to think about being environmentally friendly. So I know you always think about that, Chris, but um, i- 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 if maybe we can think of maybe giving you a little bit more money. See, I wanna give you more money. I wanna give you a lot more money. Let us give you more money from the city council. You hear that? And from the city to address the city concerns as far as some of these issues. When it comes to the salting of the side streets and stuff, cause I want them side streets. And if we gotta give you some more money to get them side street, we gonna, we gonna give you that money just for safety issues. Uh, and and that I I knew.
I thank you, Chairman Brown. Uh, Chris, this one quickly able, that's what Brown's comments, uh, again. Uh, my own district, so I'll just. On society that are cut down hard, so it's literally nice. Now, I realize this is a factor that why that has happened. Quickly, uh, too early, people got. Stalled down, it's very fast, maybe some quick question for you, please. If we were going to post-stre, David's. How would that cost people? Just what?
Well, the issue becomes, I have eleven hundred miles of road in the city. If I put out forty drivers, it would take me three days.
But that's right, but what would cost you?
Um. A, I'd need forty drivers. B, I'd need forty trucks. And then I would probably need another million dollars in salt.
Okay, per storm?
For the year. I mean, and I'd need drivers and I'd need the equipment.
Uh, and and so I I I get it. So we're for a million dollars, and I I I think that, honestly, Chris. Uh, this is, should be something that post-stre, that should be something that we should start looking at. Because again, it's really, and I know you know this better than me, Chris, you've been doing this much, much longer than me, it's a problem. It's really a problem, it's a safety problem. Uh, my district, it's horrible, the side streets, I echo Council Brown's comments. And uh, maybe we should be, budget process coming up, we should be looking at this now. Let Council Brown say. Let us get you more money, let us be your your best advocate, uh, uh, as that may seem. Uh, and we all want the same thing. Honestly, personally, uh, if somebody called me recently, I said, explain to me why I see that Springfield has. Steels now on the ground or paved and across the town, uh, municipality, it's all pavement. And I know there's many layers that we'll talk about in this onion, but I'm just saying, Chris, maybe we should start talking about. Making the post-strement of the streets the standard thing moving forward. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chairman Delgado, Chairman Brown, thank you.
Well, thank you. Listen, it's it's six seventeen. I think Chris has been getting beat up a lot. Listen. I I I understand the difficulties, Chris, you have. I mean, it's apples and oranges comparing Springfield to some of our our. Sister cities right next to us in terms of population size. Um, but I, you know, and just next steps, I'd like to see, and I wanna again acknowledge, um, Young Know, Root Tunnel, um, audit director. Um, I I get, I I'd like to see kind of some type of assessment of our contract and what we're doing in comparison to other, uh, compared to size cities. Um, in my end, um, and then I I think I've heard enough and I don't wanna put uh words in in Chairman uh Brown's mouth. You know, I I think we need to look at ways that we can kind of assist in some of the multitude issues that we have around communication. And around workforce challenges, um, to help with this in small, small challenges that we're having. But I just, A, we've been hearing about the challenges for years and I don't think the residents care. As much about what's the challenge. They they want to see a solution and getting this done. And and I wanna make sure that this body is is working with you. Uh, to to try to figure out those solutions and including having the residents, because we don't have all ideas. Chris, you don't have, you you've probably exhausted all your ideas, but I think together we can sure that we get this uh going forward in a way that's better than what it was before. Um, and and Young, I don't know if you have any last comments or anything you wanna add to this?
Nothing for me. I I think, um, I'm hearing what Chris is uh saying about um staff shortages. I think it's common, um, it's a issue. In the city of Springfield as well as other municipalities uh throughout the country. So, um, I would say it seems that seems like now it's a resource issue for for Chris. That's. That's what, um, it is, and we need to give Chris the opportunity. That's what it is and we need to give Chris the opportunity to build up that resource in order to. Properly address the snowplow issue. I think us doing an audit of DPW, I don't think we would find anything additional. This is the main issue that's Chris is facing and I I recommend allowing Chris. To properly staff his department and and his and his contractors to, you know. To address these issues.
Thank you.
I want to say that, um, thank you so much because. The community now knows what is the issue. I think by not knowing what was the issue. In terms of the resources, limited resources, now we could comprehend that it's not that they be neglected, it's that their issues is. And I think the communication is the most important thing. Myself sitting here as a city councillor and learning about the result, no resources when it comes to hiring. Because it's not Chris that doesn't want to hire, it's Chris that doesn't want to clean the street. It is that we have an issue that we need to address. And it's the issue that we need to bring more workers and what is more incentive we need to look into. So they don't go to other companies. And I think that's the major issue. But thank you so much for for this informative meeting, so the community could understand what are the issues. So I thank Chris for being so patient with us because we feel frustrated by so many calls that we have received. But thank you to the chairs of the committee for bringing this information to the public. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Council Perez. I I do notice there are a few folks online, so I I just want to make sure that, you know, we didn't skip anybody that might have a question. But if 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 no one has a question, I'd like to to end this meeting. So last opportunity, anybody else online?
Counselor Wallace, did you have anything you might have wanted to say?
Oh, but again, I thank you for having this meeting because it's very important for people to feel safe in our city.
All right, well, thank you. That ends this week. Thank you, everybody, and have a great night.